Good evening. I now call the November 3rd, 2021 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Present.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present, including our student representative, Tamia Kelly. Tamia, I'll now turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight we will be letting the Pledge of Allegiance by a Bethel High senior, Miles Murray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, School Board Chair Ms. Cherry, Vice Chair Dr. Mason, and School Board members, Dr. Smith. My name is Miles Murray and I'm a senior at Bethel High School, the home of academic excellence. I would like to share a poem by Edgar Geis, titled "Have You Earned Your Tomorrow." Have you earned your tomorrow? Is anybody happier because you passed his way? Does anyone remember that you spoke to him today? This day is almost over and its twirling time is through. Is there anyone to utter now kindly word of you? Did you give a cheerful greeting to the friend who came along or a churlish sort of howdy and then vanished into the throng? Were you selfish, pure, and as simple as you rushed along the way, or someone mighty grateful for a deed you did today? Can you say tonight in parting that the day is slipping fast that you helped a single brother of the many that you passed? Is a single heart rejoicing over what you did or said? Does a man whose hopes were fading now look with courage ahead? Did you waste the day or lose it? Was it well sorely spent? Did you leave a trill of kindness or a scar of discontent? As you close your eyes in slumber, do you think that God would say, "You have earned one more tomorrow by the work you did today"?
That was a wonderful poem. Thank you for sharing that with us. Would you mind sharing what academy you're in?
I am a part of the Media Arts and Design Academy.
Would you like to elaborate on what that is?
We do plenty of graphic design. We do animation. We have fun with different projects every day. We try to go on field trips and learn about the many different career paths of technology and media design. We try to create different graphics and we put them up in the school.
And what's your favorite part of all that?
Probably being able to use my imagination every class period.
That's wonderful. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Miles, if you could come back up just for a second, pumpkin?
Okay.
You know, I just absolutely love your poem as well, but I think that the title of it makes everybody think. You know, "Have You Earned Your Tomorrow." But I know you've got some very important people here and we'd like you to introduce them. Would you please?
Yes. I have my mom, Celeste, and my dad, Vaughn, here with me.
Where they?
Right over here. And I also have the Bruin admin team with me today, always supporting me every time, every day.
Oh, great.
Those are who I have with me today to support me here.
Well, thank you. You make us proud. You really do. We appreciate you. We appreciate everything that's happening at Bethel High School as well. Thank you. And thank you, parents, for lending them to us tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Tamia, thank you for that wonderful piece that you did. I really appreciate the fact that you delved into his academy and what that meant, because that's all important as well. Thank you. The next item of business is item 1.003, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
It has been properly moved by Dr. Mason and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Here in numbers, Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item of business is recognitions. And for that, I'd like to call on our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gole. She'll be assisted tonight by the Vice Chair, Dr. Richard Mason.
Thank you, Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, members of the School Board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, if Dr. Mason would please proceed to the microphone for tonight's recognition. All right. So before we begin, I need to put on the correct face mask for the recognition tonight. Sorry, Mr. Saunders. Ah, is that better, folks? All right, here we go. So our first recognition this evening is one of our truly remarkable coaches, our Hampton High School Crabbers varsity football coach, Coach Mike Smith. Coach, would you please join me down in front beside the microphone? If you'd like to join me right here and face the board, I have a few things I'd like to tell them about you.
Well, I hope you don't get too deep into it.
So tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have the pleasure of honoring one of the greatest coaches of all time in his 51 years as the Hampton High School football coach. Mike Smith is not only the third winningest coach in the nation, but he has won more games than any other program in the Virginia High School League history. So I think that deserves a round of applause right there. So let me tell you how he's become the third winningest coach in history. Many of his victories have come on the way to 15, yes, I said 15, state championship games and a record 12 state titles. His first state title was achieved in 1975, followed by '77, 1980, 1981, and then five consecutive state championship games from '84 to '88, winning the title in '85, '86, and '88. Additionally, he won four consecutive state titles in 1995, '96, '97, and '98, and the Group AAA Division V State Crown in 2005. Again, another round of applause, please. So over the years, our Coach Smith has not only won state titles, he has also developed and coached great football players such as Dwight Stevenson, Robert Banks, Marquise Hagan, Ronald Curry, and Tyrod Taylor. Additionally, through his leadership, Coach Smith has helped secure countless college football scholarships for many of his players over the years. Rarely spoken about, Coach Smith is the Executive Director of the Virginia High School Coaches Association. The Association hosts an annual coaches clinic with guest speakers from all over the nation. Coach Smith has been the leader behind the Association and clinics for decades. So he has had a huge impact on thousands of coaches throughout our Commonwealth. And looking at all these great accomplishments, from the state titles, the well-known football players who have come out of his program, to his leadership at the state level, the most recent one for the history books occurred on Saturday, September the 18th, 2021, when our Coach Mike Smith's Crabbers faced off against Menchville High School on the Monarchs' home field. With a final score of 25 to 14 over Menchville, Coach Mike Smith reached his 500th, yes, I said 500th, career victory, with only two other coaches in the entire United States having more wins than Coach Smith.
Coach Smith, will you join me on stage?
Have a handrail.
All right, Coach Smith, on behalf of the School Board, our Chair, Ms. Cherry, and Superintendent Dr. Smith, I would like to thank you for your dedication to our student athletes and the Hampton Football Team. You have given over 50 years of service, 50 years of service to our school community. You are truly an inspiration and a legend. Let's give him a round of applause. Without further ado, I definitely want to read this plaque to you all. Can you all see that? Really nice, isn't it? Coach Mike Smith, in recognition of your 500th career victory on September 18th, 2021, with over 50 years of dedicated service as the Hampton High Head Football Coach. Coach Smith, do you have a chance to say a few words?
I'll say a few words. But when I start, I always have to watch my wife, because she gives me this after a while. I know the time is limited. First of all, Anne Stevens Cherry back there, and I've been friends for many years. In 1975, we brought the National Championship, I mean, I'm sorry, the National Coaches Association had our clinic here. We had all the states represented at the time. Thousands of people held it to call us in. She was working with the convention tourism at the time and did a wonderful job setting it up. So she's always been a friend. And you know, with this job, it's never better roses. So there's been some headbutting going along during the time. But I kind of went by the old Hannibal theory that if there's not a way, I'm going to make one. Well, sometimes I almost all got through it. But the person that I want to recognize more than anyone is my wife, Lisa. She's the biggest fan that's ever been for Hampton practice. She learned many years ago to go to the very top of the stadium so she didn't have to listen to them say, "Let's get rid of Coach Smith. We've got to get rid of that man," and so forth and so on. So she gets up there. But when we shoot the film, she knows everybody's name. If you turn the sound up, you're going to hear her calling your name if you're doing good. If you're not doing good, we get home, I get my name called. She's very astute at recognizing when we don't tackle play well. But overall, I've had, you know, the great thing about this are the people you get to coach and the people you get to work with. And we talk about the, really, the beginning of great football teams at Hampton High School. There's two of them sitting there now. We heard Dwight Stevenson's name mentioned. They got Dwight out. Dwight didn't play but two years. These guys were playing before. So I saw Dwight on a JV basketball game. I said, "Why isn't he playing football?" And he says, "Coach, he stays broke up all the time. We call him Crip." So they got him out. He became a great player. And he's still a great person. Woodrow Wilson, Kenny Gilliam, would you guys stand up, please? First state championship team I ever coached as a head coach, these guys were on it. Now, we went through some tough times. I mean, when they were sophomores, we only had grades 10, 11, and 12. We went out one day, it's about 90 degrees. There weren't any rules on how long you could practice that time, so. Hey, we'd start at 5:00 in the morning, do 5 hours in the morning, 5:00 in the afternoon sometime. But we had some guys that our senior leaders decided was too much for them. So we had a little meeting over by the little patch of woods at that time, they're big trees now. Gave them their option. They decided to go home. These guys stayed. Two years later, they won the state championship undefeated. So they're back coaching. I appreciate them. I've got, at this time, I'm very lucky, have five assistant coaches. All five of them played at Hampton High School. So the guys that are here tonight, I sure appreciate you coming. These guys aren't the biggest guys that are on the field these days, but I tell you what, they're the quickest and toughest. Great kids. Great to work with. And they've done really well. We lost one game, but I think we lost that to 16 people. Was that seven referees? That was a tough day. But we lost to a good team and I think I got the old time to stop. So anyhow, as I said before, there are obstacles always when you work. I've worked with some great people on the outside of the teams. There's been some stumbling blocks. But that's when I said I thank Anne Stevens Cherry so much, because she's always been one of the top people that supported me from then into administration. But you guys, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and the guys that came before you and the parents. You know, in all these years, I've never had more than maybe three problems with parents. I say problems, there weren't any fistfights or knife fights or shootings, but there were some problems. So they took their kids and moved on, and we continued on. But thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the plaque. Thank you for the invitation. And Anne, love you, girl.
I got you.
All right.
I'll take a minute to invite your guest to come up with you, because we definitely want to take a picture.
I would love it.
All right. So if you guys would just join us on stage. And your wife, she's over there just shaking her head. We're talking about you two. Come on up.
Lisa, come on up, eh?
Yes.
I was Wesley, I sure did. Coach Wesley? Coach, you come up. I get behind her, though. I'll just use her. I need to stand side to. One, two, three.
Are they saying what I'm saying?
His mom.
Hi, Daddy. Y'all wanna look at him?
Oh, there you go. Damn. Are you from that high school? They're gonna exit. I didn't know anything about the red either, so welcome to the club.
That was sweet.
Okay, while we're wrapping up and waiting on the Crabber team to exit. Can you hear me in the microphone?
I can hear you.
Okay. We also have with us tonight our mayor, Mayor Donnie Tuck. If you want to come up and say a few words, Mayor Tuck? You sure?
Good evening to the Chair and to the Vice Chair and members of the School Board, to Dr. Smith and to, I guess, the teacher's administration. It has been a while, and I must apologize. I think COVID shut down a lot of things. And so I think it's probably been close to two years since the last time I was here. But I think in the last sitting I was with Dr. Smith, he reassured us that great things are still happening in our schools. The fact is that our accreditation is still high, that even with the pandemic and remote learning, that our students still excelled. I know for a fact that during this past summer with the, some employment program we had through the city, there was also the program that your academy students had with different organizations and companies and businesses in our city, and they excelled at that because we recognized them at the council meeting. So I'm happy to be here this evening. I'm certainly excited to have seen the recognition of Coach Smith and the Hampton team for all their accomplishments and achievements. But I think the other part of that is that on a daily basis, there are students who are excelling at their craft, and their craft right now is learning. And so I just want to again commend you for the direction that you've set for our schools. There are now choice schools. We hear such great, great things when we go out in the community, particularly even from Langley Air Force Base, that we had a presentation back in September, and the Colonel, who is the, not the base commander, but he's a support position, who said that he has to, I guess, change his thinking about our schools, because he's here previously. And he was not aware of excellence that we have. And so I think one of the things that we have to do is ensure that we continue to tell our story, because it is a great story. So congratulations to you for the great work that you're doing and the direction you're providing. Thank you.
Actually, at this point in the recognitions, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Gole, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments. You have always been such a big supporter of Hampton City Schools. I don't think there's anything we've ever asked you for you didn't consider and ultimately give to us. The City Council is one of the best partners we can have, and you don't find that throughout many states in the United States. So we are really happy that we have that in Hampton, and thank you for coming. For our next recognition, I want to share that each year, the Virginia School Board Association, which we all know as VSBA, recognizes board members, school board members, superintendents, school board clerks for their dedication, for their time, for their hard work in improving good governance and boardsmanship throughout VSBA meetings. There are many conferences, there are board meetings, there's board development and training. We're actively involved in the Association. Our board is, so is our superintendent and our clerk. VSBA members, they can earn credits for the VSBA Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1st to June 30th each year. And there are five levels of awards with certificates and pins awarded for those particular levels. The first, where the VSBA awards are presented annually to those who meet those requirements. So tonight, the first award, I'd like to call on Ms. Carolyn Bowers, Outstanding School Board Clerk. Ms. Bowers, you have been up here so many times to be recognized, and duly so, because you are the best of the best. But for this award, you are being given an Award of Recognition, which is given to members who earn 15 credits in a year. So congratulations for earning the VSBA Award of Recognition. Let's have a hand. Now for our next award, I'd like to call on our awesome Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith. I see Dr. Hanes is teasing you already. Okay. There's an award called the Award of Excellence, and it's given to board members and superintendents who earn 48 credits in two years. This Award of Excellence is being given to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, who has earned the award and a silver pen. Let's hear it.
And before you go to your seat, Madam Chair, it is my pleasure as superintendent to also have the opportunity to really acknowledge the great work of our School Board and all of the great and awesome things that you're doing. And so before you go to your seat, I would like to present you with a bronze pen and the Award of Achievement for earning 24 credits in one year. Congratulations to you, Madam Chair. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And I think I have other board members as well. Let's see. Congratulations to two additional School Board members who also earned the bronze pen and Award of Achievement. I would ask that Ms. Stephanie Jackson, Afanjah, and Ms. Tina Banks Gray, would you both please join me as I recognize and we recognize you as well.
Absolute pleasure. Thank you for your continued education and commitment to the young people and the mission also of Hampton City Schools of academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you so very much.
Our next recognition is the Silver Pen and Award of Excellence. This Award of Excellence is for those members who have earned 48 credits in two years. And I would ask that Dr. Richard Mason, our Vice Chair, and Mr. Jason Samuels, and Dr. Reginald Woodhouse, please come forward, that we might recognize you in this particular area. Thank you. Dr. Richard Mason. Thank you so much. And Jason Samuels. And Dr. Reginald Woodhouse. Thank you so very much. Let's recognize you. And I think, let's see, finally, last but not least, I would ask that Mr. Joseph Kilgore, if you would come forward, our final recognition this evening, the Award of Distinction. The Award of Distinction goes to members who have earned 84 credits in two years, and this award goes to Mr. Joseph Kilgore. Thank you so very much for your leadership. Thank you for representing Hampton City Schools. Thank you, Mr. Woodhouse. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith, and thank you, Ms. Gore, for those outstanding recognitions. I'd also like to say on behalf of the board, the importance of the training and the associations and the meetings and, and being able to have all seven of our board members receive certification and that. I, I think that bodes well for what we do beyond coming to our meetings and reading our reports and that kind of thing. So I do want to thank you for that. Also, before we leave recognitions, on behalf of the board, I would like to give a special recognition to all of our faculty and staff members in Hampton City Schools. And the reason I'm doing that is because during this time with COVID and beyond, there have been so many adjustments that have had to be made by our faculty and staff members. And it doesn't matter whether it was the cafeteria workers who were having to do a yeoman's job, or our bus drivers who had to do double, double shifts, who did not complain one bit, or of course, our outstanding teachers, but our general staff, everybody, our teachers and staff have been outstanding because they leaned on each other. And because of that, I wanted to not only recognize the hard work, the dedication, the sacrifices they've made, but also thank Dr. Smith and his administrative team for being able to work with this board to try to understand that these are some difficult times, and more importantly than anything, people cannot take care of other folk unless they take care of themselves. So with that said, I just have to give kudos to Dr. Smith and this board for understanding the value of human capital and being able to allow all of our faculty and staff members, everybody, to have the Monday off before Thanksgiving, the Tuesday off before Thanksgiving, the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, the Friday after Thanksgiving, because we feel that families will be trying to get together, there's a lot of stress already, and this will bode well for just showing them how much we care and love them. So I want to thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank board members. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and it consists of items 3.01 Personnel Report Number 21-20, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of October 20th, 2021, 3.03 Certification of the Closed Session of October 20, 2021, and 3.04 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, October 20, 21. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It has been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Ms. Afanjia Jackson to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjia?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. And before I move on to superintendent and staff reports, I also want to not be remiss in recognizing, Ms. Samuels, you have always, when we were talking about the extra time for our faculty and staff, you've always pushed for that, even when you were board chair. So I'm so glad you're still pushing for it, and we're still getting it, so okay? So thank you for that continued support. Next, superintendent and staff reports, I'm going to turn it over to our outstanding superintendent of schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and vice chair and members of the board. At this time, I would ask that Dr. Cagiano to come forward, and he will begin the presentation around our instructional walkthrough process as we continue to keep our focus of teaching and learning, as the mayor indicated, and certainly the board continues to provide the leadership for us as a staff. And so, Dr. Cagiano?
Thank you, Dr. Smith, good evening, Madam Chair, vice chair Mason, members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is to share with the board some revisions that the division has made to its instructional walkthrough process. And so the, the agenda for this evening, fairly short, it's from an agenda standpoint. I'll talk a little bit about the why, so the purpose behind some of these revisions, and just the instructional walkthrough process itself. And then I'll share with you those revisions that have been made for the 21-22 school year. The board is very familiar with this graphic right here, for the viewing audience at home. If you look at the top left corner there, that is a graphical, a model representation of the board, the division's strategic plan. And so you see that the focus areas, and of course, at the heart, at the center, is maximizing every child's learning. Morphing out from that, you see Dr. Smith's focus areas, our superintendent's focus areas. He has not wavered from these, he has been very steadfast the last six and a half years, these focus areas. And again, you see at the core of his focus areas, that of teaching and learning. So I'll touch briefly on some of those spokes to the wheel, for example, systems approach. This year, we have three of, for example, our four curriculum leaders are new to their positions. And so while we've had a process with instructional walkthroughs in previous years, this gives us an opportunity to revisit and take more of a systems approach versus a silo approach. Often, we work with Dr. Chris Garry's in reference to those other three spokes as we move from systems approach down. You see guaranteed viable curriculum, lesson design and delivery, and authentic assessments. When Dr. Garry's is working with our staff, you'll often hear him say C equals I equals A. So curriculum equals instruction equals assessment. So that orange wheel there kind of represents our, our written curriculum, the C piece, the I piece, the instructional is the lesson design and delivery, and of course, the A represents the assessments, the assessments there. So when we think about instructional walkthroughs and monitoring and the feedback that results from that, it really is a key, it's an integral component of the division's overall instructional plan, and one of the, the main reasons that also drives professional learning as well. So while Dr. Smith didn't coin the phrase guaranteed viable curriculum, he knows his research. So that actually was coined by, and, and made really impactful by Dr. Robert Marzano. And so in his book, What Works in Schools: Translating Research into Action, he really delves into the research and looks at what are these research-based strategies that we know have a positive effect on student achievement outcomes? And one that rises to the top is that of guaranteed viable curriculum. And what Dr. Marzano says is it's on the shortlist, it's at the top. And in the same breath there, that second sentence, he says, however, it's one of the most difficult strategies to actually implement and to see through in a school division. So when you think about the number of standards, the amount, the depth and breadth of standards that teachers have to cover, when you think about the, the challenges that are faced from a division standpoint, how do you monitor that to ensure implementation? So for us, when we say guaranteed and viable in Hampton, what does that mean? This question here, is the intended curriculum actually taught by teachers? So that's one of the commitments, the promise statements, a guarantee that, that we're making to our stakeholders, that yes, indeed, number one, it's aligned with what the state, where they want us to head. But number two, that our teachers understand, they understand what they're being asked to teach. We make that guarantee, and that they're actually teaching. So if I have a child in, in one end of the city in third grade, and another family has another child, they're being exposed to the same set of standards, given that a teacher will put a little flavor and spin on how he or she delivers that content and knowledge to students. So viability, is the intended curriculum taught in a way that is conducive to learning? Our curriculum leaders put forth in our curriculum what are known as pacing guides, and so we know that some standards require more time, whether it's because of the difficulty level or that's something the state asks us to place emphasis on. And then there's an expectation from our superintendent as well, from a viability standpoint, that we're embedding evidence-based strategies into our curriculum. So if you were to kind of summarize, what is the overall purpose, the real why behind our instructional walkthrough process? It's really these four bullets here. As I mentioned earlier, the first one, it really is an integral component to our overall instructional program. It provides great feedback to school administrators, to our teachers as well. It really drives some of the work that happens in the, the curriculum instruction and assessment department when we talk about revisions to curriculum and assessments. And then certainly, it informs professional learning opportunities for staff, primarily teachers and administrators. So step one in our new and revised process is this, if I'm a curriculum leader or a teacher specialist, I'm going to email principals at least 48 hours before I'm coming to your building. In that email, I'm going to share with you the date and time I'll be there. I'm going to share with you which teachers, which departments I'll be observing. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. One of those questions is, would you or someone from your administrative team like to accompany us on the walks? The second question will be, what's your preference for debrief? Do you want to meet immediately following these walks? Do you want me to send you an email with the information gleaned from the walks? Do you want us to set up a separate time for a Zoom meeting or a phone call? So principals will have a, a big opportunity as from a feedback standpoint, because it is key that, that when curriculum leaders, teacher specialists walk into classrooms, they're observing and kind of recording, capturing these grows and glows, that that feedback makes it back to the teacher. The second step is the creation of a division-wide calendar called an instructional walkthroughs calendar. This is a little bit hard to see, but this is my calendar looking at a two-week view. And what I've done in Google, what's beautiful is I can click a button and then all my calendar events go away. So you don't see any of my events here. What you see, and all of our staff can do this, you see just I've isolated the instructional walks calendar for this two-week period. So if I'm a building principal, what I can do is I can meet with my administrative team on a Friday, and let's say, look at the next three weeks ahead. I can look, and I could drag that down to three weeks and look at it that way, and I can see who's coming in my building when, right? And so I can map out, we talked about to administrators, putting the big rocks in the jar first. The big rock in the jar is teacher observation. And so on our part, on their part, it's how do we, how do we observe and provide meaningful feedback to teachers? What Dr. Haines and Dr. Barrow can also do now is they can decide, oh, based on data, the end of the first quarter, I would like to accompany Language Arts in these select schools, math in these select schools, science in these select schools. All they have to do is they pop this calendar open, they click a button, and that event copies to their calendar. And the same thing for principals. So using technology, a very efficient and effective way to manage, again, taking that, that systems approach. When that principal receives the email, if they want to accompany the administrators on the walks, same thing. They'll just simply go in here, and then they'll click a button, and it's copied to their personal, professional calendar as well. So this is, this will be a great time saver for us. Obviously, the curriculum leader, teacher specialist is part of the process when they walk in, they'll sign in in the, in the main office, and they're given some script as far as, as what to share with, with the main office staff, whether the principal wants to accompany or not, and then they'll sign out when they leave. And then the curriculum leaders and teacher specialists will provide fee of, feedback via email to the administrator. And so what's happened in previous years is the feedback system has been different. If I'm a principal, I can, I could expect one form of feedback from one person, one team, another form from another. So what we've done, again, is taking a systems approach. This is a screenshot of a file that lives on our admin launchpad, which is a one-stop shop for administrators, a website that houses a lot of important information for them. So what I would do as, as an administrator, I could wait for that email to come from the curriculum leader, or I just simply open this doc and I click on the link for my school. The only folks who have access to the link here would be the principal, the assistant principal, the chiefs of school leadership, the directors of school leadership, curriculum leaders, and teacher specialists. So when a teacher specialist or curriculum leader goes into a classroom, they open this up perhaps first, click on the link where they are, and then it takes them to this. This is a little hard to see, and I'll see, I'm going to zoom in in just a second. So what this is, is a spreadsheet, down at the bottom, you've got tabs for each of the content areas, English, Language Arts, Math, et cetera, even self-contained students with disabilities on the far right. So as a curriculum leader, what I do when I'm in the classroom beginning my walks, here's that row expanded. Here's the, the left side of it here, and then the right side. So you see, this is an example of Dr. Birdwright, one of our curriculum leaders, who's conducting and observation. You have the teacher's name, I've got the course where she was in. She put in there the debrief preference from the administrator, and then she has some additional notes in there. This is what the first, first part of it looks like. So as I, first part here, and then I scroll to the right. So right away, as a principal, I see the grows and glows from the walks where she was. If I'm Dr. Haines, Dr. Barrow, if I'm Dr. Smith, I can quickly find any school and just pop right there, and there's, there's the feedback that the curriculum leader, teacher specialist, not for teachers yet, but have provided to the administrators. But you also can't see here, those, those column headers are sortable. So if I wanted to sort by quarter, if I wanted to sort by teacher, course, as a principal or assistant principal, it gives me a quick way to organize, organize the, the feedback there as well. So the last piece of this process is simply this, the administrators, ultimately their responsibility to determine how teachers are going to receive feedback. And so we know relationships play, play a key role. So we know that some of our curriculum leaders have longstanding relationships with principals, and they can almost finish each other's sentences. And so we know some, they're forming relationships. We know in some cases that our curriculum leaders, teacher specialists have, have longstanding relationships with teachers and vice versa. And so it's up to the administrator to decide. So the administrator could simply receive that feedback on the doc, document there that we shared, that spreadsheet. They can copy it and paste it in an email to a teacher or a department of teachers if they wanted to. They could choose to meet with the department or teachers on their own. They could choose to meet with the curriculum leader and the teacher specialist with the department or teachers on their own. They could ask just the curriculum leader or teacher specialist to meet with the teacher. And so again, just a variety of options. And so for principals, again, based on those relationships, and sometimes even the specific walk, it could dictate, determine the feedback mechanism provided. So we wanted to provide the board just this brief overview, particularly as we've had some changes in staff. It is always an opportunity for continuous improvement, and we saw fit to take advantage of, just to revamp the process in order to expedite things. And we believe, just based on where we are with COVID, and we're just now analyzing, for example, first quarter data, that this process will really drive a lot where our chiefs, our directors, as well as curriculum leaders and teacher specialists spend their time. So that is the conclusion of this presentation, be happy to address any questions the board may have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Yes, Dr. Mason?
I just want to say, I think it's a great process. When you look at getting feedback, I know sometimes when you go through accreditation processes and things of that nature, you, you feedback, you know, a few weeks later. But this is, you know, real time, and, and you get it right away. And so I think this is definitely going to, you know, help things move along, you know, and progress, and, and continue to grow and move us in that direction in terms of helping our kids, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from board members? Okay, thank you, Dr. Cagiano, and as always, thank you for the wonderful things you do in Hampton City Schools to keep us moving forward. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, our next presentation will be presented by our chief financial officer, and that's Ms. Branch.
She looks a lot like Ms. Deutsch. Congratulations, Ms. Deutsch, Ms. Branch now.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, vice chair Dr. Mason, school board members Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It is a pleasure to be here tonight in order to provide an update on our financial status. So tonight, I'm going to talk about our September 2021 monthly board report. So at the end of September, our revenues totaled $30.9 million, and that is about 5.67% higher than the previous fiscal year. And that increase is driven by additional state funding with our basic aid program, and also the state compensation supplement for the 5% increase. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $70.3 million at the end of September. You will find in the September report that it includes the carryforward amount that was appropriated by city council on September 22nd. You will also see a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for September as well. And that does conclude the September report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about business operations for Ms. Branch, from board members? Okay, thank you again.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. The next item is number five, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received three. Before I ask Ms. Bowers to read the protocol, I'd just like to remind speakers that there is a timer, and once you get to the end of your time, there's a buzzer that goes off, that has always been the case. And next, that we ask, as pursuant to the protocol that we have had for years, that you speak to the board as a group and not as individual board members. With that in mind, Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administrator. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker, and please forgive me if I don't get your name right, because you have great penmanship, I just can't read it. Is it Randy Reynolds?
Rowdy Reynolds.
Excuse me?
Rowdy.
Okay, when you come up, just tell us what that is. Thank you so much. You're just standing here.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Sorry, I'm the first to start up. I apologize for my appearance, I just came from work. I also wanted to congratulate you on your awards before I started.
Could you state your name, because I didn't get it?
My name is Rowdy Reynolds.
Rowdy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Every day, or every child, every day, whatever it takes. This is the motto for Hampton City Schools. Every child, every day, whatever it takes. 2010, 2013, 2014, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2020, 2021. These are all years where Hampton City Schools and the school board has not followed that motto. Rapes in schools by student and faculties, assaults, discrimination, retaliation, employee misconduct are all things occurring during these time periods. These items are done by faculty, HCS school board members, and attorneys for HCS. Consistently, HCS school board members have let us down, given every opportunity to make a change. Presently, HCS does not comply with federal Title IX regulations. You know, the ones that you changed after Celeste Moms brought Celeste rapes to the school board? Every school should have a Title IX coordinator. Right now, no school has a Title IX coordinator listed. Does this show your lack of concern for rape in your schools, or is it what the bullying, retaliation, and settlements are for? None of the board's five goals include any goals for actual students. You tout the accomplishments of the board in three to five schools of three to five schools in your system while ignoring the rest. For example, my wife has been on the Phyllis PTA since 2019, and not once has any activity, event, or accomplishment been shared or discussed on the webpage. However, the primary schools like Barron and Armstrong are discussed almost daily. You care more about gaining awards than you do for the actual well-being of our children. You have shown parents you do not truly care about the students in your system, you showed us through the lack of concern for rape victims, assault victims, and children who need accommodations that you tried to fight in court. Furthermore, your educators and staff are not properly educated on mandated reporting, and do not even have mandated reporting training in their training videos. It should not take so long, so long, who is, it should not take so long for someone who is brutally attacked or raped in your school to find relief. Why does HCS consistently prolong traumatic experiences for their students? Why do students and parents need to be bullied and retaliated against by the board when advocating for their children? Which has been proven to have been done by the Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, when a parent was fired by HCS for advocating for their own child. When will it stop? I watched you bully a mom for over, for over a year who was attempting to find relief for her daughter who was raped. Why are you against this? A student who was brutally attacked in 2010 is attempting to find relief 11 years later. My wife was raped by a student in school, and the school covered it up. The constant bullying, trauma, and unwillingness of her protectors to protect her affected her for life. She developed PTSD and an anxiety disorder. It's something that I have to watch her overcome daily, still a decade later. This is not what we want for our children, this is not what child workers are trained not to do. You need to do better, train your staff, handle issues in a proper and ethical manner that benefits your students. If you can't, I respectfully ask you all to resign and find someone who can. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brenda Marks.
Ms. Cherry, Dr. Mason, board members, Dr. Smith, it's been a while. I've been trying to lay low till y'all got settled back in for the first nine weeks. But my name is Brenda Marks, I live at 54 Marina Road, and I want to preface everything I say tonight with the fact that I am fully aware that the pandemic has affected the schools. However, I'd also like to remind you that last November, when percentages of positivity were 5 to 9%, we parents begged you to put our children back in-person learning. Six months later, when the General Assembly ordered that in-person learning be re-offered again, the percentages were 20 to 25%. And miraculously, despite the fact that the percentage positivity had increased fourfold, Hampton only had 126 cases, if your dashboard is correct, from September to June. This has cost our children, and as you see now, it's costing your staff. But I have taken a few minutes to talk to Dr. Cagiano. I see that the two days off, where I have no problem with anybody having a week off at Thanksgiving, is putting a Band-Aid on an amputation. Because after two months of school, the teachers need a mental health break, two months from now, they're gonna need another two days, two months from then, they're gonna need another two days. I would suggest strongly that Hampton City Schools hire an outside consulting firm to do an in-house survey, survey of your staff and of surrounding areas to determine what it's gonna take for Hampton City Schools to hire good staff and then be able to retain them. Something's got to be done. I don't think the state's gonna let us go and have a high school graduates teach classes. This is my ninth year in this school division, and I can tell you, I have said more than once to this board, from what I've seen with my school, the Hunterby Andrews, y'all need to put a revolving door on the front, because the good teachers that you get leave. And you get stuck with the teachers like I've been dealing with, that when I ask how come I can't get a response to an email or a phone call in four days? Well, Ms. Marks, I got a life, despite the fact, it's supposed to be a practice that no more than two days to get a response. But the main thing I want to talk to you about is special education. There are some serious issues for we parents who have children with special needs. There's a general consensus with many parents of special needs students in Hampton City Schools that our students are an afterthought. As an example, I recently requested an addendum to my daughter's IEP on October the 10th to add minutes for additional math services. Federal law says you're supposed to schedule that meeting in 10 days. On October the 27th, I sent another email trying to find out, when are we gonna schedule my addendum meeting? Well, we've got that addendum meeting tomorrow morning, a full 25 days, and that's almost a month of the first grading period, that it went unaddressed. And parents should not have to hire advocates at their own expense to get the services from this division that federal law says they're entitled to. I have suggested to Dr. Cagiano this afternoon before the meeting, I would have him and Ms. Judge hold a roundtable for any of us special ed parents to come, because it's more than you can say in five minutes. And I can tell you that if you read about yourself on some of these private autism groups and special ed groups, you wouldn't like what you see. And the problems I'm having are in spite of the facts. In April 2018, Nancy Reba signed an agreement with me that was negotiated through the Office of Civil Rights of the United States Department of Education that says I wouldn't have these problems anymore, and it's not worth the papers written on. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Dietrich.
Good evening, Mrs. Cherry, Dr. Smith, members of the school board. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. I'd like to start out with a quick civics lesson. Without naming names, the head of the school board, last meeting I was at, said it's my privilege to be standing here before you. Well, I'd like to explain something to the head of the school board, and that is, it's my right to be standing here in front of the school board, and it's your privilege to be serving me as a resident of Hampton, because I elect you and others like me elect you. It's, it's, it's your privilege, and it's my God-given right, and if you refer to the Bill of Rights, First Amendment, it says I can petition my government. And just to make my point, I'd like to leave this with you, Dr. Smith. This is the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. I ask that you read this and share it with the members of the school board, so they understand the relationship that we have between the citizens and residents of Hampton and the school board members. I'll leave this right here for you. Thank you very much. So what is privilege, since we're talking about privilege here? Isn't it really what's held by those in power? In this example, you all as members of the school board. Not naming names, I noticed there's still one white member of the school board. I wonder, is he embarrassed by his skin color? Has he apologized for that because of his white, so-called white privilege? I, I just wonder about that. And since all of the rest of you are blacks on the school board, does your skin color make you better than us white folk? Are you, do you now have black privilege as a result? This is the kind of discussion that you have in our schools that somehow makes racism a proper thing in our school system. So it's, it's important that this type of discussion be had out in the open, and, and that we can dispense with these type of things in our schools. We just had an outstanding election result in the state of Virginia. It looks like now we can return to some sanity in our schools. We can, it appears that critical race theory in the state of Commonwealth of Virginia has been repudiated, and, and by this time in January, we can put an end to it. Parents do matter, after all, and all black lives matter, not just the ones that you choose to have matter. So we can now look forward to teaching our students what they should be taught in schools, and that's to be excellent citizens, and the excellence that you use in the motto of this, of this school system. So what is it, where do you get this idea that racism is so important in our schools? Well, the Department of Education in Virginia, their mission is to advance equitable and innovative learning. What's equity? Well, equity is equal outcomes. Well, because the motto of Hampton City Schools is every child, every day, whatever it takes, and excellence in, in, in that, in, in that, how can you have excellence and equity at the same time? You cannot have equal outcomes if you're proposing that we have excellent educational system. You can only have one or the other. Either everyone is equally mediocre or bad, or you strive to have everyone do as well as they can. And that's the way we need to look at our school systems. That's what a school system is for, is to teach people to be excellent in everything they do, not to be mediocre, not to be the same in everything they do. The right of every child should be the same. It shouldn't be different based on school, on skin color. See, our critical race theory violates the constitutional guarantees of equal protection under Amendment 14. I would ask you to look at that, I left you the book there. Also violates Titles Six and Seven of the Civil Rights Act of 64. Everybody needs to be treated the same regardless of skin color. So why do you want to engrain skin color in every student in this school system? What is it, why is it racist to be colorblind? I'd like to finish up with, if, if, if any of you can name an African country that would be a better country to live in than the United States of America, I ask that you do that here tonight, because there is no better place than the United States of America. This is where I want to live, and this is where I want to live in an outstanding country that it is. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Ms. Bowers, have you received any more?
I have not.
Okay. And just to be clear, Dr. Smith, as chair, I want to make sure I'm clear, I don't know about other board members, but do we teach critical race theory in our schools unless we, I didn't think we did unless we started today.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Not a part of our curriculum, it is not a part of our curriculum.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to deliberation, item number six. It consists of 6.01 through 6.11, and I'm gonna take them individually and ask that the board, I have any questions regarding them, but we're gonna start with 6.01 because it's our V SBA legislative positions, and Mr. Kilgore serves as our V SBA legislative rep, so I'm gonna turn the mic over to you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. I know this is your all's favorite thing every year. It's mine, too.
And you do it well.
And I, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you the Virginia School Board Association's legislative positions, amendments, and new positions for 2021. Again, there is a large book of all of the legislative proposals that the association lobbies for every year during the General Assembly, but these are the new positions that are going to be voted on November 15th, Monday, which is before our conference this year. And so my purpose here this evening is to present to you the legislative positions, sort of summarize them, because I know everyone got them in advance, and to individually of the nine positions, ask what your preference is as far as how I should vote as your delegate. I will say in advance, the information in the legislative handbook is all the information that I have. So if we have questions, we might know the answer collectively, but typically, at the end, what I'm looking for, for each legislative position is, do you want me to vote in the affirmative or the negative? Okay? So I'll go through them as quickly as I can, and we'll see how it goes.
Now, Mr. Kilgore, will you be telling us where you're leaning toward voting?
Do you want me to tell you which way I'm?
I think you should, sir. And give us some guidance.
I can.
Okay.
Okay, so the first legislative position is entitled Fair Assessment of Limited English Proficiency Students. And it's, it's a fairly lengthy position, but it does two things. It, one, it recommends, V SBA recommends that the General Assembly provide funding for, and the wording that they've added to this legislative position is, I'll just read the entire bullet, improve statewide data collection to ensure accountability, and here are the new words, including development of a timely and secure method for divisions to assess English-language proficiency assessment results, to facilitate efficient and appropriate educational placement for English learners transferring between Virginia school divisions. And the second thing it establishes that's new is the V SBA supports expanded availability of locally awarded verified credits to English learners as deemed appropriate by a students' English learner committee established under Department of Education guidance. This This proposal was recommended by Fairfax County. And the rationale behind it, which is really the important part to understand, is that the first change would address issues with data and test scores availability for school divisions that they currently face when English learners transfer from division to division in Virginia. And the second recommendation would provide English learners with an alternate pathway to earning verified credits and help mitigate issues, issues language barriers faced by English learners may face when taking standardized content assessments. So it's pretty straightforward. And if you want my recommendation, it sounds like appropriate language to add to the legislative position. So I'm just looking for consensus or questions. Does anybody have a problem with us supporting that position?
Any problems?
Any questions?
Any questions about it? Any clarifications? Okay.
All right. I will go on to the second legislative position, which is "Education Technology Funding." Obviously, very focused on technology funding from the state. And this legislative position added the wording, which seems very appropriate. "The state should also provide funding and technical expertise to address the cyber and data security needs of school divisions associated with such data collection mandates." So the current wording talks about data collection being a mandate from the state. This says, the association recommends that funding come to add security to that data and technical expertise to address that security. Again, that was a proposal provided by Fairfax County. And the rationale behind it is, "New language would expand technology advocacy to encompass increasingly important data and cybersecurity requirements faced by local school divisions." "School boards have become targets for cyber criminals due to the vast amount of data school divisions must collect and warehouse. So the state should become a partner in addressing those needs." Again, my recommendation would be that we support this new modified language. So I'm looking for questions or consensus.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Samuel.
So which school division is proposing this?
Fairfax.
Proposed by Fairfax County.
Fairfax County.
Yes.
And so this position, will this position reside at the local level or is this position reside at the state level?
This position will be used by the VSBA lobbyists to advocate for the General Assembly to provide funding at the local level.
Okay.
Okay, but it starts at the state level and then is divvied up.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Consensus? Good. All right, legislative position number three. Local school boards constitutional authority. And in this one, it, they added some language and I'll just read the entire sentence and tell you what's new. "School board members are constitutional officials and school boards should be, should not be replaced by local units of government or the Commonwealth of Virginia." And here's the new words that they want to add. "And elected school boards should be treated in the same manner as other elected local governing bodies and boards that are under the Code of Virginia." Again, proposed by Fairfax County. The rationale behind this added wording is, "The pandemic brought into focus inequities in how the Code of Virginia treats various locally elected boards." As just one example, while local boards of supervisors and city councils had the authority to conduct electronic communication meetings during the pandemic, prior to amendments to the Appropriation Act, school boards had to request permission from local governing bodies to do the same. Locally elected boards should be on equal footing in such circumstances." Again, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to support that. Any questions? All right. Position number four. Increase student access for what is currently titled They want to change the title of the position to "Increase Student Access for Work-Based Learning Opportunities." And it really just adds this wording to the position. "The VSBA supports," here's where the new wording starts. "additional work-based learning opportunities for students while enrolled in high school to increase exposure to and exploration of career pathways, including expanded internships, externships, apprenticeships, journeyman programs, service learning, and other work-based learning opportunities." And so, again, proposed by Fairfax County. The rationale is really straightforward. They wanted to propose changes would broaden the existing position to cover a wide variety of work-based learning and advocate for expanded availability of work-based learning more generally. Again, I think that's a great change to the position. So I would encourage everyone, yes.
You have a question for Mrs. Samuel?
I have a question. So once again, a request about Fairfax. So do they take into consideration the school schedule? Are they, are they requesting that these externships be done outside of the regular school hours or within the school hours? So how will this impact?
The language is completely silent on how you implement the, any of the work-based learning. So it could be whatever suits that local division.
So is it taking the names like internship, externships, out and just calling them all work-based learning opportunities?
No, it changes the title, but then it expands the definition of what work-based learning is.
Looks like, well, not looks like.
All that language is new.
I got it.
It used to just read internship slash apprenticeship. That's all it said.
I'm not saying that I wouldn't support it, but I would like to know how would, to describe, how are the kids, our students, going to engage in these externship? Is it going to be doing regular school hours where it may impact teaching and learning? I would just like to know that.
I would tell you that I don't think the VS, you would want the VSBA to be lobbying for one thing or another because you want to leave that silent so it becomes a locally controlled topic. You leave it, you leave it alone because we in Hampton probably wouldn't want the folks in Richmond telling us how to do it.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely, I definitely understand that.
So then each locality determines how it's going to be done?
Yes. What this does, this language encourages tax credits for the localities that do it.
Okay.
So the other wording talks about establishing tax credit for businesses that host students from a high school, technical center, or specialty, specialty school as interns or apprentices in a qualified field that aids students in completing CTE courses, requirements, or in preparation for career certifications. So it just, it opens up the aperture for businesses to get tax credits. And you have more partnerships.
Okay.
Okay. I have a question. Would this have any effect on the academies that we have here in Hampton or with the New Horizon School that we, you know, that we fund?
Potentially, it opens up tax credit opportunities for businesses, which by its very nature of our collaboration should, should be of benefit to our academies.
Okay, okay, good.
And we, they're still even in the language internships and externships, they're just expanding it in terms of work-based because the only concern would be is to make sure that with our academies, the title of their experience does not affect their certification. So if the certification requires an internship and we say work-based learning, do we have to provide a definition for what that means?
Yes, and that's the wording that's added. So additional work-based learning opportunities for students while enrolled in high school to increase exposure to or exploration of career pathways, including expanded internships, externships, apprenticeships, journeyman programs, service learning, and other work-based learning opportunities. So it's all, they broadened the definition. But it still includes the two initial internships and apprenticeships.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Yeah.
All right. Position number five is a totally new legislative position. It's fairly short, so I'll just read it. It is "School Board Authority and Governance." "The VSBA opposes any legislation or executive branch action that would empower any agency or Department of the Commonwealth to alter any school division's boundaries within the Commonwealth without the consent of the local school boards of all impacted divisions." This was proposed by Prince William County. And the rationale for this change was, "During the 2021 General Assembly session, legislation was introduced and later withdrawn to empower the Virginia Board of Education to alter school division's boundaries. A similar recommendation relating to reconfiguration of school boundaries was included in the recent report of the African-American Superintendent's Advisory Council. Current law requires the consent of impacted school division boards, and that should remain the applicable law." That, to me, that's fairly straightforward. Again, the VSBA is constantly advocating that control of local decisions remain with the local school boards. And that's, that's all what this one's about, is that we, we want our association to advocate against somebody taking that authority away from us.
Yes, let me say this because wouldn't that affect our ability to set policy and procedures, you know?
This one specifically relates to boundaries.
Boundaries, okay.
But physical boundaries. So it would potentially impact our ability to set policy and procedures for stu, or for boundaries that compressed and we lost control over certain areas.
Yes.
Question, Madam? Wouldn't that, boundaries that are, that's related to local governing boards such as city council or board of supervisors?
No, we, we set our school boundaries.
We do the same.
It's, it's likely that this legislative position would never come to roost in Hampton. It's, you know, in my mind, when I read this, it may be more of a, sort of a county thing. But our current control is we establish the school boundaries.
Right.
We have a boundary for the city of Hampton.
Yeah, for the city of Hampton, yeah.
But we, we decide where the boundaries are drawn. And apparently, there has been legislation that was introduced, but it was later withdrawn, that proposed taking that authority and putting it with another body like the Virginia B O, Board of Education. So again, my recommendation to the board is to support in the affirmative that we, we are, we're good with that legislative position being advocated for by our lobbyists.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
All right. We move on to position number six. Student health, wellness, and safety. Again, this is a modified one, but it, it's worth probably reading. It's short. "The VSBA recommends to the General Assembly and supports legislation to establish a state school health advisory committee similar to that proposed by Senate Bill 1142 in the 2019 General Assembly. The purpose of the committee shall be to advise the Virginia Board of Education, the governor, and the General Assembly on matters relating to, one, the role of employees in public elementary and secondary schools in providing health care services at such schools; two, the need for training associated with the delivery of health care services." And here's the new part. "And, three, the feasibility of requiring school divisions to provide any additional proposed health care services." It was proposed by Prince William County. And here's the rationale. "The tendency in recent General Assembly sessions has been to impose additional responsibilities upon school division's health care staff for the personal health care of students. Legislation is passed without due consideration for funding of such services. Staffing requirements, including the professional certification required to staff to provide such services, and health risks attendant to such additional services. Before such services are mandated, the proposed legislation should be fully vetted." It's just saying if you're going to mandate an additional thing on your health care situation, it should be vetted and assessed for impact, both funding and staffing-wise. Any questions? Consensus to go forward with that one? Okay? All right. Legislative position number seven. Twenty-first century communication for school boards. Imagine where this one's coming from. "The VSBA supports," here's new wording. "expanded authority to conduct electronic communication meetings." And it goes on to say, "The VSBA also supports adjusting the threshold for meeting requirements to adjust based on a governing board's size rather than the current standard of more than two members meeting regardless of the board's size." And the rationale, it gets a little bit, it was proposed by Fairfax County. And I'll just tell you, the first wording would address the fact that school boards have successfully and transparently conducted electronic communication meetings during the state of emergency and would advocate for expanded authority to continue to do so outside of state of emergencies. The second recommendation, which was related to school, or board size and getting the majority needed, was that it would only affect a subset of the VSBA members but would address an inequity in how Virginia's open meeting laws determine what constitutes a meeting. Current law is based on a single number, meaning that a much higher percentage of the total board for a small board can meet versus larger boards. The example being, a meeting of two members of a five-member board represents 40% of the board members, while two members of a 12-member board only represents 17% of a larger board. So they want to adjust the threshold for larger boards so it would address this inequity and increase operational efficiency without sacrificing transparency for boards. That may seem a little bit confusing. It, it is what it is. It's just a matter of, they want to address what the threshold for meeting requirements is to be a scale based on the size of your board versus a solid number.
So it would be on a, a scale, so?
Right, right.
We may or may not be impacted.
Right. Currently, we, we wouldn't be impacted.
Okay, okay.
So do I have consensus from the board to support that position? Really doesn't affect us, but it, it makes equity across the state. Okay, the eighth position is "School Facility Construction Funds and Financing." And they added, they deleted kind of a concise paragraph and replaced it with a much more expanded detail paragraph. And I'll just read that. So the new paragraph they want to add to this section is, "The Commonwealth of Virginia must recognize that the current local property tax-based funding system for capital improvement projects disadvantages students living in low local composite, which is LCI." disadvantages students living in low local composite, which is L C I, divisions, particularly in the area of STEM education and workforce development. The Virginia Constitution states that all students in the Commonwealth are entitled to public school of high quality. High quality is a competitive workforce environment. In a competitive workforce environment must be defined as equivalent to the advantages available to students in wealthier parts of the state. Public schools of high quality must include facilities in addition to staffing because competitive STEM education requires modern industrial standard facilities. The manner in which inequities are tempered using L C I to distribute basic aid for operational purposes is not replicated for capital project funding, leading to uh, perpetual violations of the spirit, if not the letter, of the Virginia Constitution. These systemic disadvantages lead to cycles of inequity that have held back generations of historically marginalized Virginians. Therefore, the V S B A supports legislation that supplements local tax-based funding using L C I as an equalizing factor so that all school divisions can build industry-standard STEM facilities to provide modern workforce development opportunities for students regardless of their race, ethnicity, wealth, or other demographic characteristic. This was presented or proposed by Harrison Cities, Harrisonburg City Schools, and the interesting thing about this proposal is it provided no rationale, but it's basically because they put the rationale into the wording, saying, you know, it violates the if if not the intent, the letter of the law. Um, and they say why? So that's why I don't think they just replicated it in the rationale. The Legislative Positions Committee endorsed this one with a seven-zero vote. So any questions, or do I have consensus on that? Okay. I'm on my last one. Darn. Okay, this is legislative position number nine, and it's school facility funding. This is a new position, so this is not amendment, this is all new language. I'm gonna read it all, and we'll see where we go from here. Amend the Code of Virginia to allow all local localities the option of increasing local sales taxes specifically for the purpose of school construction and major renovation. Currently, only nine localities have this authority. This legislation would amend Code fifty-eight point one, Tac zero-six-five point one of the Code of Virginia to include all cities and counties among those localities authorized to impose an additional local sales tax and use tax up to one percent as determined by the governing body if initiated by a resolution of the local governing body and approved by voters. Revenue from the tax would be used solely for capital projects for new construction or major renovation of schools. This was per vote, uh, proposed by our neighbors in Newport News.
No.
Their rationale is this proposal would add all Virginia localities to the list of those authorized to impose an additional local sales and use tax for capital projects for the construction or improvement of schools. This one did not have unanimous support from the Legislative Proposal Committee, it was a six-to-one vote. Um, but I will entertain any questions that you might have about that.
I've got one quick one. So there is already a list of localities that can do this? Yes or no?
According to this, uh, there are, I think, I think I said nine.
Nine.
Nine localities where the school board has some taxation authority.
So this is trying to ensure that all localities.
This would, this would be an amendment to the Code of Virginia, make it a law that all localities would have taxation authority.
Instead of just those nine?
Correct.
Wow.
Yes. Madam Chair. I, I would like for us, I personally would like to have a conversation with Hampton City Council to see what they're prepared, where they reside with a request such as this. I I don't feel comfortable with um, either voting or saying yes or no to this proposal. Um, and so I'm I'm gonna abstain from this one because I would like to see, um, have a conversation with Hampton City Council and the city manager.
More than just abstaining, you want to move forward with the conversation before we know where we want to do this, right?
Yes, I would I would like to have a conversation with them first.
Yeah, I was coming that way.
I would, um, my recommendation to the board is, we um, in Hampton for quite some time have had a funding formula that we get from our city, we've had a really good relationship with them, and they have been uh, very generous and increasing that generosity for capital projects as of late. So uh, and I think that that shows the the hard work that we do to maintain that good relationship.
Relationship with them, absolutely.
I think something like this would undermine that relationship.
Yep.
Because now they're not in control and might say, well, if you got it, you know.
And hands off, right.
As council members, they take heat when they raise sales taxes.
Right.
And so I'm sure if we were saying we had that authority, they, okay.
Yeah.
So.
I think that's a very good point.
I I think that uh, we are blessed with the the council that we have, the relationship that we have.
And we just talked about that tonight.
Yeah, I my recommendation would be that uh, that it doesn't need to be a a state law. If if we wanted to, we could work with our our funding, you know, and we could go to the state and get that, we could be the tenth school if we really needed that. I don't necessarily see the need to make it a statewide mandate.
Right. Is that pretty much consensus?
Can I make this statement too, that uh?
Yes.
I just see it as another um, extended um, job for us to do that it's not really necessary. You know, because what it does is it, we have to then raise our own uh, tax money to support, you know, all of our our capital improvement, right? And and I think we are doing quite well, I was gonna make that same statement, that we're doing well with the city council and the way that they are funding us, we haven't had any problem with them, so.
Absolutely, that's a good point, Dr. Woodhouse, because as I said, we were just talking about that with the mayor less than twenty-five minutes ago, and that the mayor and council, they have always been there for Hampton City Schools, we've never had any problems.
And Madam Chair, you know, um, it is very evident that the Hampton City's council support um, the 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 school as it relates to the our capital improvement project over the years. Um, they continuously increase funding for um, capital improvement. And um, and so I I I sup- I um, I support um, Joe's um, position. I I I can't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support this um.
And I think that's the consensus I'm hearing from the board.
You know.
Mr. Kilgore.
Thank you very much, I'm I'm good.
Okay, great job.
I'm ready to vote on your behalf.
Okay, and we appreciate having you there, taking care of us and looking out for Hampton School, City Schools, you appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm moving on in deliberation, item six point zero-two, I'm just gonna ask the board, do they have any um, problems with any of these deliberation items, are we good with them? Six point zero-two, deletion of school board policy G B L personnel records. We should all be familiar with those because we had those, okay? Um, six point zero-three, revision of school board policy G B N staff classification and payment plan. Six point zero-four, review of school board policy G C A A A bus driver employment requirements. Next is six point zero-five, revision of school board policy G C B staff contacts. Six point zero-six, review of school board policy G C B dash R teacher contract schedules. Six point zero-seven, revision of school board policy G C B A staff salary scales. Six point zero-eight, revision of school board policy G C B C staff benefits. Six point zero-nine, review of school board policy G C I dash R transfers and reassignments. Six point one-oh, revision of school board policy G C L professional staff development. And six point one-one, revision of school board policy G C N performance evaluation. Okay, thank you, board members, those will be moved to action for our next meeting. Now moving to item seven, items for action. They are, seven point zero-one, revision of school board policy I C, school year slash school day. Seven point zero-two, revision of school board policy I G A I, character education. Seven point zero-three, revision of school board policy I G A J, driver education. Seven point zero-four, revision of school board policy I G B C, programs for academic achievement of disadvantaged students. Seven point zero-five, revision of school board policy I J, guidance and counseling program. Seven point zero-six, review of school board policy G B B slash A B B, staff involvement in decision-making. Seven point zero-seven, review of school board policy G B B dash R, staff participation committee administrative guidelines. Seven point zero-eight, review of school board policy G B C B confidential information. Seven point zero-nine, revision of school board policy G B E, staff health and safety. Seven point one-zero, revision of school board policy G B E A, workers' compensation leave. And seven point one-one, new school board policy K B E, internet policy. How would the board like to handle these items for action?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept and approve items seven point zero-one through seven point one-one as a block.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Dr. Mason and seconded by Ms. Banks Gray that we approve items seven point zero-one through seven point one-one as a block. Is there any discussion? Here are none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. LaFonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Sherry?
Aye, motion carries. Now moving on to item eight, deliberation, first read. All of them belong to Ms. Ruth, and I see she's ready to come up here, she's just sitting there, wasn't she? She was waiting, I'm on next. You've got eight point zero-one through eight point zero-six, take it away.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the first policy is G D A B, which is the employment status definitions. This is a five-year review, and there's just a minor wording change in the first paragraph. Next, we have G D B, support staff probationary period. Again, this is a five-year review, and there are no recommended changes to the current policy. Next is G D B B, secondary job assignment guidelines. This is a five-year review, we have made some updates to the language to reflect current practice. You will notice that some of the language changes also relate to the changes we made uh, in relation to the overtime wage act. So that's where those changes come from. Next, we have policy G D G, progressive discipline, that is a five-year review with no recommended changes. Next is policy G E, athletic and co-curricular volunteers. Again, five-year review, no recommended changes. And finally, policy G E B, and it's also a mirror policy with J O H, and that's the acceptance of electronic signatures and records. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions about these first read policies from board members? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ruth.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item nine, information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on Wednesday, December one, here at Jones Maglin Middle School at six-thirty P M. Then on December ninth, the board will be holding its annual community priorities workshop. So with the board having two meetings in December, we would not be able, we would not be having a meeting on December fifteenth, which had been previously advertised because we are having that additional meeting on December ninth, which is community priorities workshop. So any information to come before board members? Any information from the superintendent? Sure, you always have good stuff to talk about. Any information to come from board members?
Oh, um.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
I could tell you set forward, you had something to say, Dr. Woodhouse.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to uh, acknowledge that we did have a visitor, uh, Dr. Harris from Newport News City Council, who was with us uh, earlier tonight, he left.
I wish I'd known, I didn't see that.
But I just wanted to acknowledge.
Mr. Marvin Harris?
Hmm?
Marvin Harris?
Marcellus Harris.
Oh, Marcellus Harris, okay.
Yes, he was with us.
No, didn't see that, okay, but thanks for bringing that up, okay? Please let him know how much we appreciate him attending.
Exactly.
A a meeting. Um, it's not a public event, so I'm gonna hold on to that. Any other information from board members? Okay, I think this has been a very good meeting, Dr. Smith. Um, we certainly do appreciate the board members' interest and attention, we had some great recognitions. Um, and again, I want to thank the board um, for being um, so ready to commit to all kinds of other meetings, activities, conferences, because it's not easy. I mean, we all have families and we all make sacrifices, and I can tell you, I as board chair certainly appreciate that. I also wanted to share, um, and he's left now, with Coach Smith, you know, Coach Smith, if you've known him for a long time, he has lots of quotes. Or he has lots of things he says that could be turned into quotes. And I think my favorite is when he talks about the importance of being a thoroughbred, which is what I think this school division is. He says you should always be a thoroughbred, and his quote is, you can't win the Kentucky Derby riding a mule. And I think while that's homespun, I think we all get the message. Any other business to come before the board? Okay, I can announce this. You want to announce it, Doctor? Don't you, Doc, yes?
Well, sure, I will announce it, um, this.
As a former band?
Yes.
You got the music in you.
Exactly, this coming Saturday, November sixth, Kickitane High School will host its thirtieth annual Warrior Classic Marching Band Competition, and there are twenty bands from throughout the state of Virginia that will be competing, and that's going to be over at Darling Stadium from three o'clock to nine o'clock P M. Uh, tickets are seven dollars for general admissions and five dollars for seniors and and kids, so come on out and enjoy yourself and have a good time.
Thank you, that's always an exciting event. Any other comments? You okay down there?
I did want to state that the Hampton High Craver Band would be there, and we are ready to win.
All right, I love it, and with that said, I know, the gauntlet's on, and with that said, meeting's adjourned.